Coverage of the Needham Select Board is brought to you by Louise Condon Realty, representing buyers and sellers since 1985. Coverage of the Needham Select Board is brought to you by Louise Condon Realty, representing buyers and sellers since 1985.
Thank you. Calling the meeting of May 24th of the Needham Select Board to order. I want to start this evening actually with, I can see public comment, I guess I'll ask if there's anybody here for public comment. Seeing none, I want to start this evening with a moment of silence, thoughts and prayers, but I just want to reflect for a moment. We have not met since the murder of 10 black people in Buffalo, the murder today of 14 schoolchildren, a teacher and a grandmother. And I just, I just am so angry and so frustrated and so very sad that this is our reality. So, I don't really have words for tonight. I went and I found a poem from one of my favorite poets, a woman named Lucille Clifton, who's a black, American female poet from the 2000s or from the 19th, you know, the 20th century. And this is a poem that she wrote after Martin Luther King was killed in 1968. And the fact that it is still relevant today just breaks my heart as we're all thinking about what's transpired and continues to transpire in America. The title of the poem is "The Meeting After the Savior Gone." "What we decided is you save your own self. Everybody's so quiet, not so much sorry as resigned. We was going to try to save you, but now I guess you got to save yourselves. Even if you don't know who you are, where you been, where you headed. I'm sorry that you're hearing my black mood tonight. It's not a hopeful night for me right at this moment. I am really deeply, deeply sad and deeply angry and frustrated and inept and impotent at all the work by so many people that has resulted in nothing but more death and more murders. And it needs to end and I hope and pray that America can figure out how to do something different because this is not what I want to see continue. So, please, a moment of silence." Thank you. We have an agenda this evening that has a number of hearings on it. And, but before we start that, we do have a proclamation for Pride Month. So, I would like to turn to my vice chair, Mr. Marcus Nelson, and ask him to please declare.
The proclamation states that whereas the town of Needham is a welcoming community and is a good place to live, and whereas Needham recognizes and values diversity of its residents and people everywhere, and whereas Needham recognizes the values and values the contribution that each and every resident makes to work, improve recreation and civic life in our town, and whereas the LGBTQIA+ members of our town are fully, are full and participating members of our community, and whereas we all appreciate the rich tapestry of ethnic, cultural, racial, sex, and gender identities of the residents of our town, and whereas the LGBTQIA+ teens are at especially high risk of experiencing discrimination, mistreatment, and even violence, and have increased suicide rates, and the town is committed to ensure that they are safe, valued, and supported. Now therefore, be resolved that June 2022 be declared Pride Month in the town of Needham, and that all residents be encouraged to recognize and acknowledge the contributions of the LGBTQIA+ members of our community as we continue to advance the principles of liberty, equality, and inclusivity for all.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The next item of business we have tonight is a public hearing, a grant of location for 463 South Street. I believe Ms. Calendar is joining us.
And Joanne should be able to hear us and to avoid crossfeed, we'll just go back and forth.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening.
Hello, Ms. Calendar.
Good evening.
If you would please let us know what the plan is for tonight and what the request is from Eversource, and whether, what you're generally expecting to do.
Okay, thank you. So, Eversource is here seeking a grant of location to install approximately 17 feet of conduit into South Street, and this is to provide new underground service to the home at 463 South Street. And I'm here to answer any questions that anyone might have.
Okay, and this is a public hearing. So, we do check to see if there are any members of the public who would like to speak to this. Okay. And Ms. Fitzpatrick, is the application in order? All right. Are there any questions from the board members? Then I would welcome a motion.
I move that the Select Board approve this kind of 17 feet conduit in South Street.
A second.
With the motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 5-0. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a great evening.
Great. Would somebody like to move the consent agenda?
So moved.
And a second? All in favor?
Aye.
5-0. Thank you. Our next hearing is a public hearing, an alteration of premises for an all alcohol license in a restaurant, Latina group. If we could have Antonio, please come forward. Would you like to come forward also? Are you moral support? What would you like to do?
Moral support is always good.
Moral support is always good.
Good evening.
All right. Hello. If you want to briefly describe what the nature of your alterations are, and for the board and for the public, this is something that we're doing as a part of our redo for outdoor dining to support it going forward.
So, we are asking for approval to continue, you know, serving alcoholic drinks as we have been doing in the past two years because we got the approval under the COVID emergency, state of emergency. And now we need to move forward with the new, you know, regulations and everything. And we're asking to include this under premises. And we are planning to continue our best practices in order to stay compliant with the law.
Terrific. Thank you. Ms. Fitzpatrick, is everything in order? I know that it took some work to get all the right pieces in the right places. So, thank you to everybody to doing that. Are there any questions from the board? No?
No.
I wish Dan Matthews was here.
Well, I was going to say, Dan Matthews has previously given the speech to Antonio, so Antonio knows what is critically important, and we've had that discussion even recently, so, very important. This is an important approval so that it can go back to the ABCC for the renovation of the premises for this new purposes? So, with that, I would welcome a motion.
I would move that the board vote to approve the amendment for alteration of premises application received from Latine Group LLC DBA Latina Kitchen, continued upon final approval of special permit from the planning board, and if so approved, vote to forward the amendment application to the ABCC for review and final approval.
And a second. Any further discussion?
Sure, Madam Chair. I just want to say that you're an asset to Needham, and I drive by quite a bit. I see the restaurants doing well and people outdoors, and I just hear a lot of great feedback. So, continue what you're doing, and you've been a great addition to Needham, and it's nice to see. So, however we can help, like, something like this, we just like to do to keep you guys going. I know it's been an extremely tough couple of years, to say the least, but we appreciate that you're still here. So, thank you.
Any other comments? My husband asked me to put in a pitch, he would like the Cubano to come back on the dinner. A little thing, you know, you make the best compared to you, so. All right. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 5-0. Thank you. We will hold on. All right. The next matter on our agenda. Oh, I probably should have said it was a public hearing. Was there anybody online here we voted without? Okay, thank you. Warn me, warn me, Miles, if I need to be warned. 6:15, so we have another minute to go?
One minute.
All right. My watch would say a couple of minutes, but.
Yes, three minutes.
We will hold on. I'm thinking, is there any other matter? Probably not.
I think the home rule petition is probably.
You think?
I do.
Okay.
Consent agenda again.
We did, okay, no. The home rule petition, okay. Ms. Fitzpatrick, do you want to brief?
So, the board set a priority to seek to have the town's off-premise licenses equal to the state quota now that the town's population has increased. And we adopted, the town meeting approved that, and adopted a home rule petition that was filed with the legislature. The, the original proposal was to, to say notwithstanding the special act that we had, the floor amendment from the House would be to actually amend Chapter 207 of the Acts of 2012. I did consult with counsel. There was some concern on the part of the House that it could be misinterpreted as assuming that the town had the special act licenses and then the quota licenses all as a total. We didn't think it said that, but it's really, because this does the exact same thing, we would recommend that the board agree to the language. And if you remember, the language in our home rule petition says that the legislature can't make changes unless either I or the board agree. So, in this case, if the board is agreeable, you would have to adopt the exact language from the amendment. And then, we are, we would then ask the town clerk to take that motion in its entirety with the vote and send it to the House, bills in third reading, and we think that we might be able to get that moved forward.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
That makes sense. Are there questions from board members?
Would you like a motion, Madam Chair?
I would like a motion, please.
I would move that the Select Board vote to approve the language of the amendment relative to H4283 as follows. Section 1, Chapter 207 of the Acts of 212 is hereby amended by striking out Section 2 and inserting in place thereof the following section. Quote, "Section 2, Section 17 of Chapter 138 of the General Law shall govern the number of licenses that may be granted pursuant to this Act. The licensing authority may establish the days and hours during which the license may operate, except as otherwise provided in this Act, such licenses shall be subject to the provisions as said, Chapter 138. Section 2, notwithstanding any general or special law to the contrary, this Act shall be submitted for acceptance by the voters of the town of Needham at an annual or special election in the form of the following question. Quote, "Shall an act passed by the General Court in the year 2022 entitled, quote, 'An Act Authorizing the Town of Needham to Grant Additional Licenses for the Sale of Alcoholic Beverages Not to Be Drunk on the Premises,' be accepted?" End quote. Well, the question shall appear a fair and concise summary of the act prepared by town council and approved by the Select Board. The majority of votes in answer to the questions in the affirmative, Section 1 shall take effect, but not otherwise. Section 3, Section 2 shall take effect upon its passage. And by striking out the title and inserting in place thereof the following title, quote, "An Act Authorizing the Town of Needham to Grant Additional Licenses for the Sale of Alcoholic Beverages Not to Be Drunk on the Premises," end quote.
Right. Any further discussion? Can I just clarify how many, how many liquor licenses this means? How many does the statutory quota allow in total?
So, that, under our special act, the number of licenses is limited to eight, but at no time more than six licenses for the sale of all alcoholic beverages. Under the quota.
The number?
The number at this.
One more. Is this just determined by?
Population.
Population.
Yes. Every 5,000 or.
Thank you. Which means every 10 years there might be some adjustment.
Okay.
Okay. Other questions? Coming into the vote, all in favor?
Was there a second, Madam Chair?
Second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 5-0. Thank you. And now it is officially official. If we could invite Mr. Charles Enta, the manager, to come forward for Rice Barn. This is a public hearing for modification, suspension, or revocation of the alcohol license for Zucchini Gold LLC doing business as the Rice Barn. Good evening, Charles. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you for having me here.
So, you have been recently at hearings at the Board of Health. That's a separate matter, the matter that's under consideration here at the Select Board relates to the alcohol beverage license for the moment. And so, I'm hoping that you can tell us where your business is at this moment, what the status is, and what your plan is or how you're behaving relative to the license that you hold.
Yeah. We have an order from the Board of Health to suspend the food operation for the moment until we clean up, clear up all of the matter that they have issued. Basically, they've pointed out like a listed, like nine items. One would be like training my employees and clean up the place, removing all of the excessive material and do the plumbing and deal with pest control. And then, in the meeting, I recall one health department employee cited us that we violated 21 points. So, I was a little unprepared for that kind of statement. So, after the hearing, I made an effort to focus into what is it that included and that 21 point that one employment cited. So, in the process, I wrote a understanding memo and sent to Tara Gird and Tara Gird sent to Diana Acosta and asked her to verify within 21 point, there was nine that was related to the word "no, no, no, no." I wouldn't know what that was, but she verified that "no" was a, "no observation is not a violation."
So, Charles, there will be a process where you'll continue to work with the Board of Health to relate to the matters about the, the health inspection and what's required to reopen the restaurant from that perspective. So, this perspective or this hearing is really strictly around the alcohol license. So, I believe that there was also a concern around the alcohol license, which is that you were ordered to suspend operations, but the operations continued and there was selling of alcohol at the same time when you were under an order to suspend operations. I believe that happened on April 20th?
Yes. The order was strictly to, not to sell food. But when that happened, we closed the restaurant. There was no activity with anything else at all except our cleaning staff to deal with what were the order of the health department that really come down to. So, we didn't sell alcohol. We didn't sell any food. So, with that, with that suspension of the license.
So, I think there was a concern or a question as to whether, I think some people had reported that they were buying takeout from the restaurant after it had closed. And the concern on the part of the board is because takeout alcohol is allowed, the potential was there for takeout alcohol to be sold with takeout food, so I don't know whether.
Can you speak to that?
Yeah, we, I'm going to speak about the sale of alcohol. We did not do anything after the order came down from the health department.
So, and, Mr. Enta, can you also speak? There's also been reports on Grubhub that a restaurant, two restaurants actually, with the address of the Rice Barn have been on Grubhub for food orders. Do you know something about these restaurants? With your location?
Yeah, we, we subscribe to their service. But when the order came from the health department to suspend our food permit, we didn't do, we didn't sell anything. We just, yeah. Yeah, we didn't sell any, any food once the, the order came through, yeah.
So, I don't believe that the Rice Barn is showing up on Grubhub as a potential option for getting a delivery from. But I do understand that these other two restaurants are still showing up as potential places where people can place an order to get a delivery from. I don't know what the relationship between these other restaurants is and your establishment other than the fact that they share an address.
Yeah, I think some of those online service has a very very strange way to practice, which I still don't understand. For instance, they use the same address, but they keep the name of the restaurant in a very different name. And I have one incident with the one company, I think they call themselves DoorDash. They want us to sign an agreement with them, but then when we cannot find the IRS paper, they said, "Okay, we cannot do business." That would be fine. So, we don't do business with the DoorDash. But then, they continue to use our address, and I told them that, "Look, we do not do, we, we have no relationship, but you cannot use our address to anything because that is not right. You say you will not accept my paperwork without that IRS letter. And, and then, then you somehow use my address that is not right." And I told them that, "Look, if you do that, I just have to talk to my lawyer." And then they just disappear. I think at that address, we just call ourselves the Rice Barn, but they, they have a very funny way to do advertising with the people here and there that we're not aware of.
Okay. So, the matter that's before this board is to consider that there was in fact a violation of the order. And I, I'm not clear in fact whether we have actually established that or not. Yes, Chris. Chris. Attorney Heath, if you could please come forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think it might be helpful, I just added a handful of facts to the timeline. Just to explain a little bit further what I think prompted the hearing. On April 20th of this year, the Public Health Division issued a summary suspension order to the Rice Barn, which ordered that it cease and desist all food service on the basis of some documented violations of the state sanitary code. On April 25th of this year, the Board of Health held a public hearing on that summary suspension order. That's because in cases where the Health Division issues that order in the first instance, the restaurant has the right to request a hearing before the entire, the full Board of Health for review of that order. So, the Board of Health held that order on April 25th, and that night voted to sustain the summary suspension order. On April 30th of this year, the Public Health Division conducted a follow-up inspection on its summary suspension order. And that, in the conduct of that investigation, noted that it appeared the Rice Barn was continuing to serve food, both in terms of observed food that had been prepared and point of sale documentation that had, that existed on that date. So, any food service that was occurring on April 30th was occurring in violation of the summary suspension order as it had been sustained at that point by the Board of Health. Those reports of continued food service as of April 30th prompted the town to file a complaint in Superior Court, seeking a preliminary injunction to enforce the summary suspension order. Because that's, you know, when any town order isn't being complied with, that's typically the town's remedy. You go to court and ask a judge to order, in this case, the restaurant to comply. On May 11th, after, after hearing, the Superior Court issued a preliminary injunction ordering the restaurant to continue to comply with summary suspension order. And that preliminary injunction remains in, in effect. So, it is in terms of the, the discipline that is being, I think, considered by the board tonight, under the liquor license, the underlying violation is failure to comply with the town's order. Because liquor licensees are required to not engage in or allow any violation of any law in the operation of their premises. So, it's really the documented violation of the suspension order that would give rise to a suspension or revocation of the liquor license.
Okay. So, at this point, the matter before this board is affirming that, that the suspension order is in place. And that, given that, that this board, the public hearing, purpose of the public hearing is to make a decision whether this board would suspend the alcohol license for 30 days or until the Board of Health reinstates the food establishment permit so that food and alcohol could be sold at that time? And I'm looking to see if there's, there's a third motion just to authorize the town manager to send a draft and a notice of that decision. So, that's a matter that's under discussion for the board. Are there any questions from the board?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Okay. Just to take a step back and, as you stated, Madam Chair, our job tonight is to find the facts. And based upon those facts, whether or not you violated this order. And if you did, then, you know, we have the right to suspend the. And if you did, then, you know, we have the right to suspend the license under one of the provisions. I just, I guess for Attorney Heap, there was testimony in Superior Court. Is that correct? Similar to what you just explained to us?
So the, yes, so the, in the complaint to Superior Court, well, backing up, the complaint to Superior Court was supported by an affidavit from Tara Gurg of the, of the Health Division, who provided testimony on paper, not in person, that, about the issuance of the summary suspension order, the posting of that order on the, on the, on the door of the restaurant on April 20th, the fact that that suspension order went into immediate effect once it was posted on the front door, and the follow-up inspection that occurred on April 30th, which disclosed that there had been continued food service after posting of that order.
And did the judge have to find that there was a violation in order to issue his order or would that?
The judge has to find, on the basis of those facts, which I just outlined, the judge found that there was a high likelihood of success on the merits in the, if that case were to go to trial. That's the, that's the standard of review on a preliminary injunction. But effectively, on the facts that we presented, the judge had no trouble issuing the preliminary injunction, basically enforcing the order until such time as either the, enforcing the order requiring that the restaurant remain closed until such time as either the Health Division, the Board of Health, or the court lifted that order.
Thank you. And then just Madam Chair, just for Mr. Inta, just if you could respond, and I just want to frame this a little bit. I understand you, you have testimony that nothing occurred after the, this April 20th date, but the facts seem to indicate to the contrary. So our board can suspend a license, we cannot reissue the license, we can do things in excess of what might be requested tonight. And I think part of a license holder responsibility, or I know part of a license holder responsibility is to be candid and, you know, trust and that we can trust that license holder in the town. So I will just ask you again, because I think if we can get the facts straight from you, it would help in my decision how far we want to go with this in light of the facts that I just heard. So are you telling me that after April 20th, there was no activity on the premises as far as food service or any other activity to the public? Is that your testimony today or?
Yes. I just wanted to point out something that there might be some food cooking without my knowledge. That could be something that appear on the POS when I am not at the place after the suspension order came in. I think the inspector searched for the POS and there was some transaction, file one or two transaction.
Okay. And I would consider that an operation under the definition of the suspension, even any cooking at the premises. Thank you for that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other questions?
Can I just clarify? Because it sounded like the judge upheld the suspension order. So we know that the order is suspended, but it's not, it's not clear to me that we don't know that, that we know that they are complying with the suspension. I know that Matt just asked about this, but I have to say that I've seen comments, you know, on Facebook just today that the Rice Barn is taking orders. So I wonder, I understand that you're saying that somebody could be cooking in your kitchen. I don't feel like that's really concrete enough to satisfy what we need to know here.
I suspect that some may cook right after the April 20th, but.
But this appears to have happened today.
Today, we don't even have a food, any food in the, in the kitchen.
Okay. So you're certain that there's no cooking happening?
No cooking.
Under any name?
Under any name.
Entity?
If any of us walk into the kitchen, you'll find that there's no food store in the kitchen. We clean the place up here.
Okay. So Mr. Inta, you are the manager of record. So if there were to be some other employee who did go in and cook and deliver from your restaurant, you are still the responsible party. I'm certain that you know that, but, but that is the case for how we look at it.
Yes.
So I think the question that's in front of the board is what is the appropriate step as it relates to the alcohol license, given the ongoing closure of the restaurant right And does this board find that it would think that a suspension of the license to run concurrently with the closure of the restaurant until the Board of Health is prepared to reopen?
I think the recommendation is 30 days after the Board of Health orders it reopen.
I have a question. What's your timeline? Are you going to reopen? Do you want to?
I, I want to. As a matter of fact, I am just about to contact the Board of Health that we are ready for an inspection.
Okay.
But I just wanted to wait for this hearing first before I really can be sure of what to do next.
Okay.
So that is, yeah.
I guess, Madam Chair, I'm comfortable with the recommendation. I just, I just want you to know, Mr. Inta, we've had history, I'm not going to get into it tonight, but it's very, very thin ice with what's been going on, both alcohol-related and these, this violation. And I'm really hoping that as a business owner, you can turn this around. I know in press, you did say that some cooking was going on. I'm not going to get into the details, I believe the affidavit and what the judge found, but by your own testimony, there was cooking, which I would consider to be operation. So I'm, I'm comfortable with our findings of fact and I'm comfortable with the recommendations if this board is with the 30-day suspension after you get back in business.
Any other comments? Public hearing. This is a public hearing, so if there's anyone from the public who wishes to speak. We don't have anybody in the room. I don't know if there's anybody on Zoom. Nobody on Zoom?
No, I'm interested.
Okay. All right. Then I would welcome a motion from the board. I do find that there is sufficient reason for the board to take action. We are very much hoping, Mr. Inta, that you are able to reopen and that you are able to reestablish the business. But it's important that we get the food back on good footing and then that we also take similar steps as it relates to the service of alcohol and ensuring that the employees are all trained and ready to be in that service. If someone could make the motion?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I'll move that the select board finds sufficient evidence that Zucchini Gold LLC doing business as the Rice Barn located at 1037 Great Plains Avenue in Needham and its licensed manager, Kellum Paul Inta, violated 204 CMR 2.05, paren two, permitting illegality to occur on premises to wit failure to comply with the summary suspension order of the Town of Needham, Public Health Division dated April 20, 2022, and 204 CMR 2.05, parentheses eight, maintaining the premises in an unsanitary manner as detailed in the summary suspension order of the Town of Needham Public Health Division dated April 20, 2022. And motion to the select board pursuant to Master General Law's Chapter 138, Section 23 and 64, suspend forthwith the license of Zucchini Gold LLC doing business as the Rice Barn located at 1037 Great Plains Avenue in Needham, with the term of the suspension to run for 30 days commencing when the Needham Public Health Division or Board of Health reinstates licensee food establishment permit for violating 204 CMR 2.05, parentheses two, permitting any leg illegality to occur on the premises to wit failure to comply with the summary suspension order of the Town of Needham Public Health Division dated April 20, 2022, and 204 CMR 2.05, parentheses eight, maintaining the premises in an unsanitary manner as detailed in said summary suspension order. And third, that the select board vote to authorize the town manager to draft and send notice of the select board's decision to licensee with a copy to the Alcohol Beverage Control Commission.
A second. One second. Thank you. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Five zero. Mr. Inta, we do wish you the best. I know that many of us have had many wonderful meals at the Rice Barn over the years, and I hope that will be so again.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there another 30 days for me to wait before I can call the Board of Health?
You can call the Board of Health as soon as you are ready. If that's tomorrow, go ahead and do that.
Okay. Yeah, yeah.
Okay? So you can call them right away.
Great. Yeah, thank you.
I hope that you are ready and, and they will be in to re-inspect.
Right. Yeah. So once the inspection occur and it is positive, then both licenses could be back on track.
So the alcohol license will be another 30 days following the reopening from the Board of Health.
Oh, okay. The food comes first?
The food comes first and then the alcohol license?
Wait for another 30 days.
Wait for another 30 days, which hopefully will give time to get all your servers and everybody tips trained and reestablished again as well.
Okay. Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Okay?
Yeah. I was not quite clear, so I just.
Good to check.
Yeah. Because we, we have been closed for more than a month already. So, yeah. So, yeah, I think for the liquor license, yeah, we, we can still live with that other 30 days. Yeah, we have no, yeah, I think, yeah, the, the food is, I mean, most Thai restaurant, perhaps the way I see it, our main sale is the food, not liquor.
Yep.
Unlike other type of restaurant that maybe rely on, on, on other product than food.
Than food.
But the Thai restaurant is really, look at food as the main attraction.
Okay. Good. Well, then by all means, follow up with the Board of Health and get back up.
Yeah, okay. I will give them a call that we are ready. And, yeah, I think there is, the health inspections look at certain thing in, in some way that threw us into really a very tight corner. For instance, the pest control is more like the restaurant as well as the pest control The pest control saying there's no activities in their report. But when the health inspector came and they found something, so it's become some sort of a conflict. And that conflict seemed to be thrown at us. But we try to be helpful. If the pest control advises what to do, we will try to really engage. For instance, there's a lot of, I shouldn't say a lot of, but some dropping along the wall.
Mm-hmm.
And the pest control advises to move all tilting away from the wall so that where the track of the dropping occur could be highly inspected and visible. So right now, we pull everything away from wall and we paint the floor with a very light tone color, although we sacrifice the, the passage in the center because we don't have to use a lot of, you know, large passage. That way, the track of mice that's running along the, the wall could be easily monitored if there's any activities or that. We can really be able to tell ourselves is activity is really higher or lower, whether or not the dropping continue to occur, that kind of thing. And, and besides.
So Mr. Inta, I am sure that the Board of Health will work with you on all of these. Their job is to enforce the regulations from the state of Massachusetts. They do that across all of the restaurants in the same way in town, and I'm certain that they will work with you. I appreciate your efforts to make it as straightforward as possible for them to understand what the situation is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, I don't know if we moved the appointments or just the consent, so.
I was hoping we moved both, but if we.
I'd just like to move the appointments.
Just in case.
Just in case. So moved.
Second?
Second.
Well, I need somebody else to second your motion.
Well, I thought he just so moved. Okay.
Oh, so moved in a second? Great. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? We are at four zero right now. Okay. That brings us to our next item on our agenda, which is a public hearing, a dangerous dog hearing. This is a hearing that we have continued regarding a dog by the name of Axel, a dangerous dog hearing in accordance with Master General Law, Chapter 140, Section 157, and Town Bylaw 3.7.5 residing at 233 West Street. Is Ms. Razul Aga available?
The dog owner is not on the Zoom. We have her attorney, Attorney Cohen, is logged on via Zoom. Madam Chair.
Ah, her, okay. Well, if Mr. Cohen, if Attorney Cohen can join us.
I'm here. Sorry.
I was thinking that Ms. Razul Aga was going to be here this evening.
Good evening, Attorney Cohen. Good evening. I just got a text from her. It was supposed to be, she was going to be here, but I just got a text from her that she is in an emergency with her son in the car and she couldn't pull this. So, so I'm here.
Attorney Cohen, could I ask first if you would like to apologize to our attorney for, for previously stating that he had not provided you with information on the order?
At the last hearing, I believed I had never been given the order. And afterwards, I found the order and I deleted the order. The most important paper was in the, in my dedications, which is obviously my fault. He did provide timely information to me on the order. I'm sorry that I raised it, thinking that he didn't. He was right. I was wrong. And he did get me the paperwork, which I misplaced. So that was my fault and I'm sorry for picking and putting it up.
Okay. Thank you. Would you like to provide any other update this evening? I know that we've had a few open questions that continue. I don't know if you have any further update, but we have had some regular updates since our last hearing. We appreciate those.
Okay. Good. Glad you got those. And so I know that one dog has been installed a little early, but it will be put in within the next few days. For some reason, it has signed a, a situation, some issue with insurance, giving her a list of people to contact or, to check with her.
Could, could I just interrupt on the insurance for a moment? Sorry. What I'd like to ask is if it's possible to get her existing homeowner assurance on file? It sounds like she's looking for some additional insurance as it relates to her dogs, but I think it would be helpful to at least follow our order and get the existing homeowner assurance on file with the chief of police as soon as possible. Can that happen?
Okay. I'll get to that.
Thank you.
And I think, a second.
On, on other fronts, I think you can, she continues to work to find a time with the behaviorists?
Right. The behaviorists had a question, which Diana submitted to the town, but I don't know if you have it. The behaviorist, Dr. Bright, with a MSc Angel, her assistant asked for the vet records for the last incident. I don't know that the town has them, but it's helpful for the behaviorists to see what, what, what the dog did. Maybe Attorney Heap and I can speak about that, about trying to get those.
Okay. We can ask that you work together with Attorney Heap to get those records or the records that the town does have? Okay.
Okay. So, aside from that, I think she's given two, at least, I think I gave one and she gave two updates since the last hearing.
So I think one of the other pieces that was still in process was working to schedule Axel's operation. I don't know if there's any more progress on that.
I don't know if there is either. I didn't ask for that, and I haven't seen anything about it. I'll find out if an appointment's been scheduled.
Okay, thank you.
That'll be in Thursday's.
Are there any other questions from the board?
Madam Chair, I just wanted to clarify. On our second order, and I drove by the premises, it says that a fence efficient to prevent escape be erected around the premises. Now, I understand the backyard is fenced in, but I drove by and I see the front door and there's a straight shot out the front door, you know, to the sidewalk to the road and, you know, adjacent property. So I guess my question, and maybe it's a clarification from this board, is were we looking for the entire premises to be fenced in? That was my understanding. Or are we just looking right now for the backyard? And maybe I can ask Attorney Cohen first. Was there an intent to fence in the front yard? Attorney Cohen?
She didn't talk about some type of a gate or something on the porch, I think she talked about, but I don't know. I think the fence is the fence the way it is. So if there isn't an intention now to expand the fence anymore than she already has. It was your intention that the fence should go around the entire property?
So Attorney.
That was my understanding. I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
Attorney Cohen, my recollection is that there is an electric fence in the front of the house, I believe. But I could be incorrect. It would be worthwhile understanding that. And she had previously indicated to us that Axel was not well-trained with the electric fence, but that there was something, I think. We had asked originally about having the electric fence extended around the entirety of the property. And my understanding was that Ms. Razul Aga thought that was too expensive at the time. But we would appreciate some clarification about exactly what portions of the property are fenced with what. I think that would be good information.
Yeah, and Madam Chair, I guess I would say that if we were, you know, it looks like this will be continued to get more information, but in order to get a final on this, if we're moving in that direction, I'd like to see that front area fenced in to be safe. I know that electric fences can fail, and I think that actually did happen in one instance with the battery. So I would like to see that premises.
I'll look at the order that you made and I'll look at our hearing.
For comfort.
Madam Chair, if possible, to make a note to Attorney Cohen, who may not have been here for the first public hearing. We're having a few audio issues here at Town Hall. So while the board is speaking, unfortunately, they cannot hear you speaking in at the same time. It's going to be a bit of a back and forth. I do see you speaking there, and Madam Chair, I do see Attorney Cohen speaking at this time.
Thank you for that. That's probably an improvement, so I can speak. So regarding the fence, I just need to go back and look at the order and watch the end of the first hearing, just to see what the intent of the fence is. I don't, the idea of, I get to see if we even talk about fencing in the entire premises or not. I thought she had talked about some gate on the porch, but I could be wrong. So I will look at that so we can talk about the fence issue the next time we meet.
Thank you, Attorney Cohen.
Are there any other questions from board members?
Madam Chair, quick question about the rebar. In the photos, I can't tell how far away, how far apart the bars are. Do you have a measurement?
I don't, as, the intention is that they are less wide apart than the dog is wide, but we'll see about that. So I've got a bunch of questions to ask her. And I'll get to that with her.
Okay.
This week.
Any other questions from board members?
Yeah, just looking quickly at the photos, the, if you look at the leaves and anything of scale, I'm guessing these are about 12 inches apart. I'm just, but don't quote me. Let's get an exact measurement.
Folks, I am sorry. I have to go for a seven o'clock hearing in Newbury.
Okay.
These are the questions I will get.
I guess I would ask that the board make a motion to continue the hearing to our next public meeting on June 14th. And we may need to understand if Attorney Cohen has any commitments that evening or that Ms. Razul Aga is available that night, but that would be our intent for the next discussion.
I'm looking open that evening, and I'll make sure she's here.
Okay, thank you. We will make such a motion, and I understand that you need to go. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Bye, everybody.
All right.
Madam Chair, I move that we continue this hearing to June 14th at 6:30 PM at Needham Town Hall.
Could we say it a time to be determined?
Yes. Okay, time to be determined at Needham Town Hall.
You have a lot already.
Right. A second for that?
Second.
All right, other discussion by the board? We would need to have it relate to the attorney, but is there any other discussion? If none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero. We will continue the hearing. That brings us to the next item on our agenda, which is the town manager's report. The remote participation policy. Hello, Ms. King.
Hello. Good to see you all.
Good to see you.
So yes, this agenda item is about remote participation in public meetings under the open meeting law. This has been a bit of a roller coaster ride since March, but for the past two years, I think, as you know, the state has suspended two provisions, in particular of the open meeting law. The first suspension was we were able to provide remote-only access to members of the public for public meetings. And we also, the second suspension was that all members of public bodies could participate remotely. And this was put into place when we couldn't meet safely in person. Those suspensions and flexibilities are set to expire on July 15th. So I'm here before you to make a recommendation for how we get our ducks in a row before that time, particularly for those boards that notice hearings, you know, at least 30 days out. I'll put an asterisk that the state continues to discuss this issue, so this is relevant as of the state law today. And if it changes before July 15th, we'll be back and reconcile anything that's happened in the meantime. So to just put a finer point on it, as of July 15th, all public meetings must have an in-person option for the public to attend. So Zoom-only public meetings will not be allowable anymore. And that's entirely subject to the state law. There's no local control component of that piece. Also, on July 15th, board and committee members have to be back in person unless the town, through the town manager and this board's policy discussion approves participation remotely of board and committee members. There are conditions on that, remote participation by board and committee members. And so what's before you in your packet is a policy that would outline exactly what the rules are for remote participation. Again, this is participation of board and committee members themselves. This is not about the public's participation. So if it's helpful, I can just walk through this proposal, and we have it as a discussion-only item for tonight. So I'd say this policy before you is nearly identical to comparable communities that all have very similar policies one to the other. And every section except section four really tracks the state regulation, the Attorney General's regulations for open meeting law, very, very closely. So I would just call your attention particularly to section four. So municipalities can be more strict than the state regulations around remote participation. And so section four is really where communities customized their policies. So to put a better framing on it, under the Attorney General Regulation, members of boards and committees are really encouraged to be in person as often as possible. And I want to look at the exact language. It says in the regulation to participate remotely only if physical attendance would be unreasonably difficult. So that is where in section four, individual municipalities have decided for themselves what does unreasonably difficult mean. So I guess I'll just highlight some of the options that were in other policies. And these are, so I'm looking at page four, under section four, policy options. Some communities had a policy that had just left it general, that physical attendance would be unreasonably difficult. Others specified that that might be due to illness, family emergency, multi-service, geographic distance. Other communities set policies in terms of the number of meetings that you could be remote for. So this is really a section that I'd love to hear feedback on. And of course, any questions or comments on the rest of it are welcome.
Any questions from people?
I have one, which is what if a board or committee, because this applies to all boards and committees in town, should we adopt it? And we had a policy that said no more than 25% of the time, but what if they had a board or committee member who persisted in wanting to participate remotely without the other conditions? Is there anything that the town can do to say the person can't participate that way, or?
You're asking enforcement-wise?
Would it have any teeth? Yeah.
So, under the local policy as drafted, it's the discretion of the chair if they approve member, that member to participate remotely, and that approval decision is final. I will say, under the state regulations under the Attorney General, I believe if somebody violates our local policy, it would be a violation of the open meeting law. And so the recourse is an open meeting law violation processed through the Attorney General's office.
Okay, so the chair has the ability to grant permission for remote participation?
Yes.
Yeah. Does this apply equally to any of the working groups that might arise from a committee?
Yes, so this would apply to all town boards, committees, subcommittees, working groups. The only exceptions are the retirement board, they can make their own policy decisions around remote participation. County and regional school districts make their own decisions. And the disability commission would fall under this local policy, but their exception is that they don't need a quorum of the members to be in person. For all other boards and committees, a quorum would need to be in person, and the chair of the committee or the person designated to chair that meeting would have to be in person.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
First, hey, thank you for summarizing the chart. I think was the best part of the red. What's allowed, what's not allowed. So, but looking at these, first of all, I think, as you know, and I think we are in favor of physical participation. It's very difficult when someone is removed, and I think it's unfair to the public as far as the difficulty in communication, even tonight with the issue we have with the audio. It's just, it's not effective in my point of view. So I'm all for trying to make accommodations. I think if you say unreasonably difficult, you might want to put in something like, for reasons, you know, not limited to, and I like to see the personal illness, and give it, give it some type of framework, because I could say I'm at the Cape or I'm in Florida, and it's really, you know, unreasonably difficult for me to attend the meeting. Now, I know it's addressed in other bullets, but I think this looks somewhat like a pick and choose some of these and others. So if, I would be happy with that language. And was that from the state? Is that unreasonably difficult?
The unreasonably difficult is right in the state regulations.
Right.
These bullets really are a laundry list.
Yes.
Right now for you guys to react to.
And I'd like to beef it up. I think that's a great laundry list, and there might be something where the chair has discretion to say, you know, that's not on the list, that's why maybe included but not limited to, and then the chair can make that decision. I don't mind the 25% of the time, just so it's not abused. And I think, you know, like as kids are back in school, and, you know, it's a difficult time. I still, I understand that for some still, but we're trying to get back to work. And I really think we need to not only encourage this, and I'll take a step a little further, is I think like tonight in the dog hearing, I'd like to have people come and encourage people to come before us. I understand for a grant of location, it's easy to come from the car, and I don't think Miss Callender has to come in all the time to discuss something that's pretty much that we understand will most likely go through. But I think anything that's contentious, I really, as a board, would like to encourage face-to-face participation. I think that's the way to do it. So to answer your question, I'm fine with the unreasonably difficult, but I think it has to have some parameters. And I'm fine with the chair extending some of those reasons and also a limit on how many times someone can participate. Because if they're not able to effectively participate, I think we have to have a discussion on that. So, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. King?
Thank you. I think it's a great blend. Thank you very much. I also think for the public access, it's, we've crossed the line. I think it's good that we have remote access moving forward. I think Zoom is with us forever.
No, I'm fine with the public watching. I have no issue with the public watching, just coming to us.
I think that's sort of, it's a great improvement. I think that's sort of a great democratic plus. It is a good blend overall, and the geographic distance is not referred to vacations, just basically personal employment, the business was public law, right? Unless it's like the Wellfleet Chamber of Commerce, I guess.
Yes, but we certainly could clarify that vacation is not a qualifying hardship.
Okay. I mean, I don't want you to order.
No, it's a question.
Yeah, okay.
I don't know, frankly, that I would be ready to say that somebody couldn't choose to use their one time while they're on vacation if they're going to choose to take time out of their vacation to attend a board meeting. I don't know that that's an evil thing to do. So, but I do like the limiting to the 25%. You know, some other ways to sort of size that down to make it clear that in-person is definitely intended.
I see, you're right.
Yes. I do think when this came up before, all right, it was something I know that we talked about before the pandemic started, since I had a particular address in that time, the 25% number wasn't in here. And we definitely had boards that immediately reacted that would have been over that limit. And that was part of our board's reason for not putting in a remote participation policy back at that time. So it feels like there's some other tools to kind of dimension how people might think about this.
If I could put in a plug, I'd say the town, particularly our IT staff and the Needham channel, has done a really great job outfitting so many rooms to be hybrid-ready. And so we have some work to do. We have a number of boards and committees that are still entirely on Zoom. So we're going to have to transition them before July 15th. But we have at least four rooms in this building alone that I can think of, and the library and the RRC and ESAB that all are ready to do hybrid. And so that supports the public participation, continuing to record meetings and be able to view them later on YouTube. So I think we're in a really good place to do this, and it'll be good to get a policy in place before the transition, so we don't have to scramble.
Do you think we will continue to need even more meeting rooms to be outfitted for available space, or do we have sufficient?
It's a good question. I think we have sufficient right now, although I think we'd have a better sense once people come off of entirely remote, because I think we'll see an uptick of people using owls in smaller meeting rooms. You know, the state discussion, one of the bills filed is would they require hybrid meetings as opposed to have it be allowable? If that were to happen, I think we'd really do a good analysis of. If that were to happen, I think we'd really do a good analysis of if we're, if we need to do anything else.
Could I add to that? It's, the interesting thing about the hybrid meetings is that they're really beneficial. They're just more staff-intensive. So, you know, you used to have a small committee that would meet in the basement here and take their own notes and go home. And now they all need staff, and there's a lot of them. So it's really been something that's been a challenge for us. And we're, some of us are running more than one at a time. So.
Well, I wonder if there's some other ways to provide training to other committees, or some other ways to think about that that we might also.
So we're hoping to bring this back for a vote on June 14th. Is that right?
Yeah.
Comments are welcome until the week before.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Has the draft policy, or do we want to share the draft policy with any other elected boards or something like that? That might be a good idea to give them a heads up that this is under consideration.
Particularly adjudicatory boards, include the ZBA.
Yeah.
Sign review.
Okay.
That's great. Great idea.
The next item on our agenda this evening is the town manager report.
I just had a few notes, Madam Chair, just to highlight some of the work that's been going on this weekend in the heat. There was an amazing event, a lot of events going on, touch the trucks and the fishing derby. The heat held off till the late afternoon, which is great. But an enormous amount of work goes into those. And another amazing event, the Needham Unplugged concert that was supposed to be upstairs pivoted to the Common. And I just really credit so many people who made that happen. So that, by all accounts, was a wonderful event outside. So that was great. The, you know, for a lot of the folks who are working on those are also getting ready for Memorial Day and for the big soccer tournament that's coming up. Town looks fantastic. This is, I think, our time of year to shine, right? You know, the flowering trees and the grass, as we all say. So shout out to all the staff who work on that. That's my report.
Thank you. So I do think the Needham Unplugged event just shows that as the Common gets redone, one of the requests will be for a new policy from this board about additional uses of the Common. So people continue to find ways that they want to use the Common and more requests for that. So that's a good thing. All right. The next item on the board agenda is just a discussion for any further comments for 557 Highland Avenue. And while I know that the moderator, the town moderator gave me a hard time for using 557 Highland Avenue, I will just say 557 Highland Avenue is the muzzy site, right? But we're going to keep calling it 557 Highland Avenue. And we'll see if they want to give it its own moniker at some point, but in the interim. So they will be coming before the planning board. And I'm looking, I don't have the planning board date right. June 7th. June 7th. I was going to say June 8th. When is it? June 7th. They will be coming before the planning board. I know a number of people have that on their calendars. But if there are any comments from this board based on what you've heard, I don't know if people were able to attend any of the sessions that Bull Finch held for citizens in town to learn something about the project. So opening up for questions and discussion.
So I was interested in discussing the parking. I wasn't able to attend the information sessions online, but I did read the whole packet that they provided, and also some of the follow-up material, one of which was the follow-up on the traffic study and the parking study. And I just wanted to see if we could maybe think about, it appears that the provided parking, which is provided based on Needham's zoning requirements for parking, far exceed the anticipated use of the 557 Highland development. And I'm wondering, given that that is the understanding of the follow-up traffic report, as well as the Highland Center itself, I'm wondering if there's a way to reduce the amount of parking that is required on the site. Because they really have, they have a standalone five-floor parking lot, as well as two sub-ground levels and two buildings. It just seems kind of excessive. So I'm wondering if we could, you know, potentially, if there's a way to take the height of the parking garage down so that we don't have to cover so much ground in, you know, non-sustainable materials and so on. I think there could be a lot of benefits.
So the issue on Pike Parking is a good one. It is an issue that's been flagged. I know that we've discussed with the planning board before. They do believe that their parking standards are in fact higher than are being used. So in almost every case, they end up giving waivers for parking. So I think that's a valid concern to bring forward. In some earlier discussions, we had heard from the developer, I don't know where they are now, but we had heard from the developer, that the developer would consider putting solar on a top floor of the parking garage if that was not required for parking spaces. So I think those are all legitimate questions to ask and to raise, for sure.
Canopy solar would be another bylaw change, not bylaw zoning change, rather, for a planning board to deal with.
If it were to be canopy solar.
It was canopy, right.
Right.
Madam Chair?
Yep.
I guess I would highlight, and I remember the discussions preliminary with Bull Finch. And we have a letter regarding the rail trail. I think what I'd like to see is mitigation funds. And I know they were open to it. Maybe the dollar amount was low at the time that we had the discussion, because I said that's a good start. But I would like to see mitigation funds to make that corridor able to have shuttles or multi-use to the heights and then beyond, as we talked about getting into Newton. I think if they put money towards that, as well as the improvements, traffic improvements that they're going to pay for, I just, I guess the one thing I'd be looking at is mitigation funds out of them to really help develop the town. You know, we keep talking about the gateway to Needham. So I'd really like to see an emphasis on that and a good negotiation on that. And then I'd like to also see them discuss, I know they're talking about recreational amenities around the property. And I did suggest that they talked to Park and Rec at the time, and I don't know if that's been done of what we really need. I think they think, you know, they have an idea of what might be needed, like, you know, little stations to do workouts. But I don't know if that's quite the thing that we need. And I know there was some discussion of helping with mills, you know, instead, or something to do on-site that would be a walking path. I just want to make sure that they get Park and Rec in the mix in that discussion to make sure that what they, what they want is what we want. So those are the two things. And I agree about the parking as well, as Ms. Frail pointed out. I think if we can get that cut down, though, it'd be mutually beneficial. Thank you.
What kind of discussions still, it's not clear to me where we stand with the whole rail trail discussion. I know that there's an ARPA-funded study for multimodal transportation, but I believe that's sort of just begun.
It hasn't even, it's just a draft, right?
Right. We've submitted a draft to the state yet. So it's not begun yet.
Okay, so there's still time to discuss whether it's going to be multimodal, whether it's just going to be a rail trail and a walking path.
There's lots of time. Okay, great. We are at the beginning.
Excellent. I mean, not excellent. It'd be great if we were further along. But since we haven't cleared that up.
We have to get back to the basics.
Right, exactly.
But improving transportation from Needham Heights to Newton in some way, shape, or form is certainly, I think, a shared goal.
Okay. And then do we, does this also include sort of, at least bike and pedestrian transportation back to the heights, to the commuter rail link-up?
Yeah, that's in this study. Yes.
It's in this study.
But is it, is it a part of the project?
I think that's what Matt was suggesting, is that we ask for mitigation funds to at least do our share, which we could probably.
Yes, that's exactly right. So we can work on getting that into more of a reality. Money is always the driving force on many of these issues. And I would just also mention that, you know, in our discussion with Newton, we talked about their NEMO, right, their transportation where they have it around town for anyone who wants it for a really reduced rate, I think it's what, three, two or $3. Maybe that's also something that they could help fund that type of study to look into other transportation options throughout Needham. That would benefit them, that the whole area as a partner with us. So I just, I'd like to see what we can get as far as transportation funding from this project. Because again, it would be mutually beneficial.
I could add, we have talked to Senator Roush about an earmark, but I don't know that it will fund the whole thing. And this would be to look at whether it's feasible for the town to run a rideshare van service that could include our seniors or replace our senior vans, as well as what Newton is doing, is it's become quite popular with high school students. So they allow it.
And middle school students.
Down to as low as 13. So when you talk about last mile, it could be something that would be very, so I have no idea whether we'll get it. So we'll come talk to you about whether we can study that. But it's something that's very interesting that Newton is doing. So as you say, if we don't get funding that way, maybe there's a way.
There are other ways, right.
I was going to say, Newton is doing NEMO, and in Wellesley, they do a service called Catch Connect that's similar. So there's something on both ends. So yeah.
I don't think NEMO has the best ranks.
I know.
Something else, huh? Could you find it? I don't know. All right. Thank you.
Madam Chair, would you like me to draft a letter for your meeting on the 14th?
I think that would be great.
Because the hearing will only open on the 7th. It'll sure be.
Right. For feedback. Any other comments we all said on that? Okay. I don't know if we have any committee reports this evening. I haven't been told of any. If not, then I would welcome a motion to go into executive session.
Madam Chair, I move, we, under Exception 6, let's go into executive session to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body.
And the chair so declares.
Not to return to open session prior to adjournment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? We'll call vote. Ms. Frail?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Keane?
Aye.
Mr. Borelli?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Thank you.